Well then, good morning and welcome to the City Planning Remote Public Meeting. Brian Singer, who is the Department of City Planning Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, will now outline some general information about the remote public hearing and how you can participate.
Thank you. Verbal testimony will be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearings will be emailed to you after you've completed the registration process. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at 1-877-853-5247. That's US toll-free. The meeting ID is, I believe that there's a typo on this slide, the meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you're accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please also note that your testimony will be audio only. The commissioners will hear you but will not be able to see you. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff, so please listen closely for your name to be called. If you are accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself and you should see a notice on your screen allowing you to unmute your microphone. If you're accessing the phone, the hearing via phone, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. To do this, press star six to unmute your phone. When your testimony is complete or your three minutes expired have expired, you will be muted again. Please note that muting and unmuting registered speakers may take a moment as we are adjusting to this new hearing format, so we thank you for your patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. You will be notified when you can unmute your microphone to speak. Please classify your testimony as in favor or in opposition and indicate if you're speaking on behalf of another person or group. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into the microphone. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will be generally allowed a total of ten minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you are watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony; otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
Madam Secretary, please begin the meeting. Madam Secretary?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Here.
Commissioner Duett.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, August 19th, 2020.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers one and two, and supplemental calendar number one, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, September 16th, 2020, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 65. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers three and four, CD1, N200331ZCR, CD3, calendar number four, N200241RCR, in the matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar numbers three and four. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Just one question. I want to vote yes, but is four laid over or four is on the calendar?
Four is on the calendar, Commissioner Cerulo.
Okay. Okay. It says laid over on mine unless I'm reading from a different document.
No, you're right. The one that went out last night says laid over on it.
Only three is on. Four and five have been laid over.
Four and five have been laid over.
So...
If we could reflect that the vote is only on the first of the reports, calendar item three.
Okay. So for adoption of calendar number three. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
What have to make?
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Excuse me. Commissioner Capelli votes yes.
I have that recorded, Commissioner Capelli. Thank you. Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Commissioner Rappaschott. Yes.
Fable report adopted on calendar number three. Calendar numbers four and five have been laid over. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number six, CDs nine and 10, N210019HIM, in the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of the Alexander Hamilton House on adoption of calendar number six for referral to the city council. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaschott.
Yes.
Fable report has been adopted on calendars number six. Borough of Manhattan.
Larissa Ortiz, Commissioner Ortiz, I just wanted to note that I just arrived owing to technical difficulties.
Okay. Your vote on calendar number six, Commissioner Ortiz. Fable report has been adopted on calendar number six. Borough of Manhattan, calendars number seven and eight, CD1, N200253ZAM, that's calendar number seven, and calendar number eight, N200254ZAM, in the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 375 Pearl Street Parking for adoption on calendars number seven and eight. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaschott.
Yes.
Calendar numbers seven and eight have been adopted. Calendar number nine, Borough of Queens, CD7, N210018HIQ, in the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of the amended Kingsland's Homestead on the adoption of calendar number nine for referral to the city council. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duett.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rappaschott.
Yes.
Calendar number nine has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 69. Borough of Bucks, CD2, N210006HKX, in the matter of a communication concerning the Menida Street Historic District.
The first speaker on this item will be council member Jafrel Salamanca Jr. And I will note that we will extend to the council member the courtesy that we extend to elected officials. They may testify at whatever length they desire.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yes. Nice to hear your voice, council member.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. And first, I want to thank you, Commissioner Chair Lago, for the opportunity to give my public statement on Menida Street. But before that, I must be remiss if I don't give a big shout-out to my good friend and one of your fellow commissioners, Orlando Marine, who is a Bronxite, actually from the South Bronx. And Orlando has been a good friend and a mentor to me, and it's just good to see Orlando as a Commissioner for City Planning. And I'm proud to say, estoy bien orgulloso, very proud of Orlando, so thank you. Um...
(inaudible)
Well, thank you, council member, both my words. You got it. Let me begin with my statement. I join you today to pledge my support for the proposed historic designation of Menida Street Historic District. The 800-block section of Menida Street dates back more than 100 years to the early 1900s, when the Huntswood neighborhood was experiencing tremendous development and population growth. As the neighborhood evolved from a largely rural area to one that saw increased modes of transportation and a boom in manufacturing, people flocked to the Bronx to take advantage of new opportunities. A century later, Menida Street has maintained a strong sense of community as well as a connection to the historical nature of when the area was first developed. Recognizing the need to preserve the history of the neighborhood, the Menida Street homeowners banded together and began pushing for the historic landmarking. More than a decade after their advocacy begun, my office was able to facilitate a study of the area for designation in August of 2018. In a city that's ever-changing, Menida Street serves as a link to the rich history of the South Bronx, and on behalf of my community, I respectfully request that the City Planning Commission approve this historic district application. And lastly, I would like to thank the community advocates who pushed for this designation, such as Maria Torres, and also want to thank Bronx Community Board Two District Manager Ralph Acevedo, as well as the LPC Chair Sarah Carroll and her staff for the thorough study of the neighborhood and for working with the homeowners throughout this process. And with that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, council member. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you, council member. We will now follow our practice of starting with speakers in opposition, and we have
Good morning, everybody. This is Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of the Rockaways in Southeast Queens, and Medical and Religious Freedom, United States. My problem with this is really, I'm glad the community, he says, wants it, meanwhile, all kinds of people on disability and people computer illiterate cannot be involved in this process. If you're saying you're representing the community, then how are these people being involved in this process? This is, it sounds good what you say. You said the community board wants it. I've heard that before. The problem with it is, is like, people are being left out. During this covert catastrophe that you guys say is going on, I don't understand how things are being passed without the real community, the whole New York City. Our lives are, according to your administration, our lives are in danger, so then why are things being rushed and pushed? This sounds like a very good idea, you know, the way you put it, but people are being left out of this situation, and to me, that's not really good. Once again, if this is what the community really wants, okay, all for it, but you're leaving out people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jacobs, questions? Thank you. Our next speaker in support will be Maria Torres.
Hello? Hello?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Maria Torres. Good morning. Thank you all for having this meeting today. I understand it was rescheduled from a previous time, so we thank you for extending us the opportunity to speak on this project here. I am speaking as a community resident. I live on Menida Street. I live at 870 Menida Street, so I am right on this block, and I was approached by many of my neighbors when, as Councilmember Salamanca discussed, back in 2018, to continue the push to get this block landmarked. And it really is a very special place. I've lived here for over 20 years, and many of the people on this block have, and I'm one of the new people on the block, actually. Many people have lived here since the 50s, the 60s, and the 70s, and they've raised their families here. Their kids have lived here as well. And so, we really wanted to retain the beauty of this block, the feel of the block. As you all know, much of the Bronx is changing. There's a lot of development going on, and this block would be in peril if it wasn't landmarked. It is Zoned R6, and so this is a way to retain the history and the beauty of this block. I think if any of you come down here, and I'm sure Mr. Marine is very aware, of the beauty of this block. It's tree-lined, many of the houses still retain many of the features from when they were built back in the early 1900s. And so, we did petitions and got the majority of the homeowners to sign off. We got probably about 50 signatures from everybody here out of, I don't know, I think there's 70 homes or so. And so, you know, there is an overwhelming majority on the block that wants to see this happen, and we're very grateful for landmarks for passing it when they did, and look forward to seeing what you all do. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Torres, both for your testimony and for your advocacy on behalf of your community. At this point, we have Commissioner Ortiz would like to ask a question.
Hi, Maria. More comments. I want to say, you know, we really do appreciate the work that you've done. I know firsthand this block, you know, familiar with it. It's really quite beautiful, and the effort that you put forth with your neighbors and colleagues is really impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres. Oh, actually, no, Commissioner Marine would like to ask a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. More of a comment, and a thank you to the members of the community that worked so hard to make sure that this block was kept as intact as possible and in the landmark status that it deserves. There are a few folks that do not want this to go through because they have other intentions due to the recent rezoning of raising these homes and building higher, and I think the community has spoken, and they have indicated that they do not want that. So thank you to the community. Thank you, Maria. Thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate all that you've done to make sure that this block is landmarked.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marine. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Torres? Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres. At this point, I will note that I am not aware of anyone else who is interested in speaking. If there is someone who has not yet spoken who would like to be heard on this matter, we will hold for just a moment to give them the opportunity to register, either to provide testimony by telephone or via the New York City Engage web portal.
Madam Chair, there was Eileen Marr, who is registered to speak in favor.
Thanks so much. Ms. Marr, the floor is yours.
I think there was a mistake because I'm registered for the Reckless Island planning.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marr. We'll get to that later on on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. We're all getting used to this new way of operating. And again, I will ask if there are, if anyone else has registered. Okay, appearing that there aren't others, then this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 11 and 12. Calendar number 11, CD4, C200103ZMQ. Calendar number 12, N200140ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 110-1-40, Saltell Avenue rezoning.
There will be a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Richard Lobel, Amanda Iannotti, Nelson Tuckman, and Tom Curro.
Richard Lobel, on behalf of the applicant. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So, it's a pleasure to be before the commission today and particularly to be restarting the Yule process on this application, which we view to be one with great merit. So, the applicant is before you on 11040 Saltell Avenue. Next slide. So, to summarize the application here, this is a zoning map amendment, and you can see just from the project summary, the intention is to rezone the property from existing R6 and R6B districts to allow the extension of an R6 district to cover the entirety of the property. The property in the block was last rezoned in 1989, at which point the R6 district was bifurcated into create R6B districts. And so, the applicant here, the Regal Park Healthcare Center, has an existing facility located roughly 75 feet east of the proposed rezoning area. So, the map here would allow for the R6 designation to cover the entirety of this corner property in order to allow for what would be an extension of the existing facility, and we can talk a little bit about that. And Nelson Tuckman from Regal Park is here and can talk a little bit about the operation. The proposal, as stated on the bottom of the page, is for a new six-story-plus seller mixed-use community facility building with residential, with a total floor area of roughly 30,000 square feet and 25 dwelling units. And the dwelling unit count and the bedroom mix has changed somewhat over the course of the application. We can talk about that as well. There would be 13 ground-floor parking spaces, and the applicant would anticipate compliance with MIH option one. Next slide. So, the commission can see here that in the circled area, you've got the subject block on Corona across from the park, and on the corner of Corona and Saltell Avenue, both of these are wide street, Corona being roughly 135 feet wide and Saltell being roughly 100 to 110 feet wide. So, you can see the designation of the majority of the block fronting the park is in R6 with this small corner being R6B, and while this is a relatively small adjustment to make to the zoning map, this, of course, allows for a much more robust development for this healthcare center and residential building, as we will see from the plans. Next slide, please. So, you can see here from the tax map, the area of the proposed rezoning, again, a small partial portion of the existing corner lot already exists within the R6 district. This would merely allow the extension to the corner of Saltell and Corona. Next slide. A land use map of the area, and interesting to note here, Commissioners, is the existence not only of the six-story Regal Park Healthcare Center fronting Corona here, but also of Madison York, a living facility, care facility located on this block on the southeast portion at six stories, as well as other facilities within the area further to the south, a six-story care center. So, this is an area which is, as you can see, predominated both by residential as well as community facilities, particularly closer to Corona Avenue. And we submit certain photos demonstrating the surrounding area, and you can see particularly in view six, you can see kind of in the background, the Regal Park Healthcare Center. The proposed building here would mirror the healthcare center and being a six-story building to kind of contribute to the context of the area in that regard. Next slide.
Jeff, please advance this slide. There we go.
Okay, there we go. So, you know, we have the plans here and the project architect is on the phone as well. So he's able to talk to this. And we were privy to the Commissioner's comments from the review session. We're happy to address some of the issues with regards to, among other things, the design of the units, the parking at grade. But basically, just to kind of summarize and to allow us to move to the architect's presentation and to his ability to discuss some of these issues. The applicant here is a longstanding existing nursing home, which has served the surrounding area for, I think the building was originally built in the nineteen seventies, maybe nineteen seventy-two, so they've been here for decades. And so when the opportunity arose to potentially allow for additional space here, the applicant was quite anxious to obtain these additional lots and to allow for expansion of certain services at the facility. When we first entered this process, the building that was proposed at the site was going to house a dialysis center in the cellar of the building, which has roughly sixty-nine hundred square feet. This was considered to be a rather huge endeavor and a huge possibility for the applicant who right now has to, despite having elderly residents through difficulty in travel, these residents were required to go far afield in order to go to dialysis when necessary. So the opportunity presented itself here and the applicant wished to construct this building with residential above to allow for a feasible development. This would provide for twenty-five units, one-bedroom units as originally designed on floors two through six and would allow for the ground floor and cellar to be devoted to dialysis. When we went to the Community Board, and I know that there was some discussion at the Commission in this regard, the land use committee had, we had a very favorable meeting with them. When it came to the full board, they presented their resolution to the full board. There was some confusion around that. Despite the fact that many people supported what was going to be proposed here, there were certain conversations, side conversations regarding, among other things, living wage and such, and essentially this was rejected by the Community Board. We did have the benefit of having Councilmember Moya at that hearing and have since been in discussions with his office. And one of the things that came out of the Community Board discussion was the fact that this area was really short-changed with regards to community centers and particularly senior centers. So the applicant reconfigured its proposed development plan to allow for placing some supplemental community facility space on the ground floor here, which would allow the applicant to move space off of the Rego Park Healthcare Center site and to devote certain space within that existing building to a dialysis center. And so this is a, you know, this is a huge opportunity for the applicant. And in addition, for the community to allow for what was formerly space within the building to be devoted to medical and to dialysis, to be devoted to a community center. So we really worked with the Councilmember here primarily in fashioning this application. As the applicant describes it, when you have a balloon which is ready to burst, you know, you have the opportunity to allow some of the pressure to come off. Moving some of the space from the existing center to this corner lot would be huge for the applicant and being able to reconfigure the space of the existing building. So in addition to that, obviously, land use becomes an important rationale here. We understand there were questions around land use at the Commission's review session. And truthfully, this is a property which is located on a portion of a block which should be R six. It fronts on the park. There's a huge wide space in front of this. Not only does this benefit from having a one hundred and thirty-four-foot-wide street in front of it in the form of Corona Avenue, but this is at the corner, which allows for even wider space and even better access to the site than for these other mid-blocks which are rezoned R six. So in conclusion, with regards to our land use comments and with regards to the legal background of the application, we feel that this has strength, not only in being an R six rezoning because of the merits of the land use rationale, but also because of the merits of the program that's offered here and really provide something which is needed in the surrounding community. I would just defer to Tom Curro, the project architect, for comments regarding the architectural aspects of the plan.
Mr. Curro?
I only see the drawing that's on the screen right now. Try, I don't see any wave on mute. I mean, my microphone says it's not-
We're hearing you, Mr. Curro.
Oh, I'm, hold on a second. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Someone was just calling me from your office saying I was muted. So I was trying to unmute, but I guess I'm not muted.
I'm very sorry, but the time has run out, Mr. Lobel.
Oh, that's fine. We're happy to answer questions that the Commission poses.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Okay, if I could now call on Commissioner Bellows.
Hi, thanks for being here and presenting, I guess, so two questions. One, if the architect can walk us through the site plan, that'd be great. And then the other, I just want to understand, so does the applicant plan to continue to own and operate the residential portion of the project? Or is there interest primarily in the community facility space?
So I would just briefly, Commissioner Bellows, answer with regards to the residential portion and then allow the architect to walk through the plan? Yes, the applicant would intend to own and operate the residential portion as well, specifically as was discussed at the Community Board and with Councilmember Moya. The current staffing at the Rego Park Healthcare Center is roughly two hundred and fifty employees. Many of these employees travel, you know, far distances to come to work, you know, from Brooklyn, from the Bronx, and from further afield. And one of the opportunities posed by this is that the applicant will be able to house healthcare and other workers at the center and it would allow them to live, you know, within really a hundred feet of their place of work. This is no small thing, particularly in this era of COVID. Particularly when COVID first hit, there were issues with regards to applicants traveling on public transportation and all of the health issues that are posed thereby. And so the applicant, yes, would indeed operate the residential, which would in part help to offset the cost of developing this building. But yeah, that is the intention going forward.
That's very helpful to understand it. I'm sure the applicant understands that the leasing of the M I H units would be under different, would have to be done through a lottery process. And so those couldn't be leased in the same way as the others.
Totally understood, Commissioner. The intention would be that market rate units would be leased to current employees who indeed are currently, you know, some of them currently occupy housing that is owned by the applicant. So they would be transferred into market rate units and the, of course, the inclusionary units would be administered by an agent.
Thank you. But if we could maybe then hear from the architect, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Good morning, Chair and the Board. Just briefly walk you through this site plan. Well, basically, we have the advantage on this site to address two streets, open an area where there's a number of multifamily homes, two, three families and up. And so the shape of the building is dictated by the required setbacks in order to get light and ventilation into the apartments and also to create a court on the westward side of the site. The entrance to the residential building and the community facility are both on Corona Avenue, separated by the entrance to the residential parking. Basically, we have the entire first floor and floor below as the community facility, which will consist of an ambulatory diagnostic treatment center. The apartments are distributed through floors two through six. And as you already know, there's twenty-five dwelling units. And basically, we try to enhance the facade to respect the residential environment from, down from grade up to the top floor. So I believe this is an enhancement to this part of Queens. It's part of this part of Queens. And I believe it complements that whole area that the nursing home is located in. Is there any questions?
I see that Commissioner Bernie has questions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curro. We don't have the benefit of your full set of drawings here, but we did see them, the review on Monday.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments on the design. One is the positioning of the parking at street level at the community center in the cellar. It seems to me that that really should be reversed. It seems a terrible pity to put parking at street level with windows and condemn the community center to the cellar. So I wonder if there's any way to reverse those two.
Yeah, I agree. It was initial intent to put that parking down low in the cellar. But because of the minimum slopes for ramps and the fact that we require minimum thirteen spaces, there was just no physical way to maneuver these spaces below grade. And so our second option, which we implemented, was to put it at grade. And we still were able to get the ambulatory diagnostic treatment center to work. And it works, it still works very well with, you know, with respect to access for peoples in wheelchairs. And it's just that it wasn't our first choice, but because of the number of spaces and the ramp slope, which takes up, you know, a good amount of horizontal space, it just wasn't possible.
So the thirteen spaces are required, is that correct?
Yeah, they're required.
Well, it's a pity, might be, I would really want to relook at that issue.
We had another lot this size, it would have been, it would have been great. But we're trying to, we're trying to fit a lot of things in a very small area and still make it work. The Health Department requires separate entrances. They don't allow sharing residential and community facility. I don't think the city does either, but that was one of the reasons why we have these remote entrances. And so, you know, we had to give priority to those type of things. And unfortunately, you know, when you add in the two handicap spaces that are required and the clearances that the Building Department is going to look for, this is what we have, you know.
So the second comment I had was on the apartment layouts. And I did notice that there's a, first of all, there's a tremendous disparity between some of the apartments, where you have two-bedroom apartments that seem to be smaller than the one-bedroom. And, you know, I think it would be an interesting exercise to put some furniture into those apartments because I think some of them appear to be extremely difficult to furnish. And it's always a salutary exercise to start putting the furniture in and you see some of the difficulties. So I'm just wondering, is it the case that the market rate apartments are given the larger bedrooms and the affordable units get the little closet bedrooms? And why is there such a disparity between the different layout?
There was no-
Well, actually, Tom, if I can just jump in for a second, it's Richard Lobel. I just wanted to say that pursuant to M I H regulations, you know, of course, we will be complying with requirements for interspersing the market rate and inclusionary units. So just as a matter of law, the, you know, the, there would be, it would be interchangeable between the market rate and inclusionary tenants. But Tom, I think if you want to address some of the particulars regarding the unit design, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, I mean, there may be some flexibility in equalizing some of the floor areas of the apartments. I can certainly look at that and we could provide a furnishing, a furniture plan to see if we can clearly express how that works.
That would be very helpful, thank you. And the other thing is that when you look at the facade, for some reason, the penetration, the windows are exactly the same all the way down the facade, regardless of what's going on behind. And you're also showing almost a sort of nineteenth-century subdivision of the glass into tiny panes, which is really not necessary these days. So I wonder whether, you know, another look at the facade might be appropriate as well.
Oh, we could look at it. But the intent here was to basically not have two buildings, one on top of the other, but basically make it, make it appear as if, you know, this is a residential building and give a residential identity to even the community facility. But definitely we'll take a look at it and explore other options.
And one just final small point. On the existing site photographs, there are some mature trees. Is it the intent to keep those trees or does the site plan here show those trees being replaced?
Well, in all cases, we like to preserve the trees and reuse them where they can be reused, as long as they're not blocking any important parts of the building. If we did have to deal with that, we would relocate them. But we would not, we'd not remove them completely. It would be relocated or planted somewhere else.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curro.
Commissioner Ron Prashant.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions for the architect. I'm just trying to understand something. The community center and the ambulatory diagnostic, those are going to be two separate entities, correct?
I'm sorry?
The community center and the ambulatory diagnostic. The reason I bring it up is because I'm wondering, for handicap accessibility, if you need to go to the community center, you got to go through the ambulatory diagnostic space.
Originally, it was, it was proposed to be the same user, but I believe that may change. If it does change, we will relocate that elevator so that there is accessibility to the lower level.
Okay, a couple more quick questions. That curb cut on Saltell Avenue?
Yes.
The twelve-foot-one, is that just to access the trash room? So that it's easy to pick up the garbage, you know, pull up the truck and park it there or put it on the sidewalk or?
Yeah, it's meant to be just a backed-in type of access to the trash room only. That's the only reason for the curb cut. We still be, you know, keep that as far away from any of the other entrances as possible.
Okay. And also just some of the concerns that Commissioner Bernie raised. But I guess my final question is, was the Community Board informed of these design layouts or were they sent these revised plans? If anyone could speak to that.
You know, the last plans they would have had would have been the ones prior to the redesign with the cellar community facility space. So I think we may have forwarded them a copy, but the ones that they were, that they had in front of them during their Yule hearings were the prior plans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin. Yes, thank you. I wonder if Mr. Lobel or Mr. Tuckman could speak perhaps to the recommendations from the Queensborough President, which are somewhat at odds with the plan that you've described to lease the market rate units to employees of the nearby healthcare center. Borough President is requesting more affordable housing, particularly for seniors, that the community facility space would be used for senior center or community center, and that there be large, more larger units for families. I wonder, had you discussed with the Queensborough President the leasing intentions here and the notion of using, substituting the ambulatory care center?
Oh, it's Richard. So, no. Subsequent to the Queensborough President hearing, we redesigned to both allow for the cellar space to be utilized solely for community center space and additionally responded to the question regarding the size of the units by redesigning to modify the bedroom counts from all one-bedrooms to fifteen one-bedrooms and then five studios with five two-bedrooms to allow for larger families. Since then and since further conversations with Councilmember Moya, who of course, in addition to being the affected council member, is Chair of the Council Zoning and Franchise Subcommittee, the conversation was to see whether or not we could actually bump up the size of the studios to allow for one-bedrooms and solely one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. We were going to attempt to do this, you know, as a zoning matter. We have not maxed out on our floor area, so there is probably a little bit of flexibility if we did want to try to redesign some of the units. But those changes, Commissioner Levin, were made after the Queensborough President's hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the Commission?
I have a few questions, one is whether the applicant intends to seek city subsidy?
I would ask Nelson to comment on that if I'm in error, but my understanding is that no, at this time, we would not seek city subsidy. Nelson, I believe that's correct?
If you could confirm that, Mr. Lobell?
Correct, at this time, we are not seeking any subsidies.
Okay, thank you, the other thing I would be interested in is the applicant, you mentioned that the applicant operates other housing, I'd be interested in the applicant's experience, expertise in developing multifamily housing.
You know, I think I may have overstated that, the current, Nelson maybe can speak to this, but the current residential units occupying the property, I think there's, there's units that are occupied by existing workers at Regal Park Healthcare Center. So I don't, you know, I did not mean to say that they, you know, they operate other housing generally, I just meant to say that the units that are currently occupied by Regal Park Healthcare workers, that those units, to the extent those are being removed for the, for the proposed building, would be, those tenants would be, would be, would be the same workers and spaces would be offered to other workers as well. Nelson, do you want to just, can you confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the case, so.
Would the applicant intend then to team up with someone who has expertise in developing, constructing multifamily housing?
Likely we would just bring in a, ostensibly we would bring in a contractor, but you know, we have a lot of experience with developing real estate from other projects, including Regal Park Healthcare, which about six years ago had a about two and a half million dollar facelift, so it's not something that we have no experience with, but we would likely bring in a contractor.
Okay, and, Mr. Karo, it would be helpful if you could share with us your portfolio of multifamily housing as well.
Yeah, well, I do, I do these type of projects throughout the five boroughs. I've been practicing these type of jobs since the early nineties, always done a lot of work in Queens, and I've seen codes and the, that exchange dramatically over the last ten years. So, yeah, I mean, that's basically, incidentally, there are more slides, I think the floor plans are in this set, if you care to scroll through, just letting you know, yeah.
Okay, any other, any other questions from the Commission? Then I will thank the applicant team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioners.
And we have signed up as a speaker in opposition, Bruce Jacobs.
Good morning again, this is Bruce Jacobs, Coalition of Rockaway in Southeast Queens, board member of the Civic Edge Mayor Community, also a U S Navy veteran and nine-eleven first responder. This is ridiculous that this, this company is trying to say they're going to rent to hospital workers when there's a troubles, when people get in apartments. There's also, this is promises made, the community board voted against this thing. He says he's working with the councilman Moya? That doesn't mean nothing, because the councilman, in my opinion, in these cities shouldn't be the ones that's dealing with these real estate guys. These real estate guys, they did the same thing in Far Rockaway, they promised the world and they give nothing. The thing is, if the community board voted against it, they should have a say, not just the councilmen. It seems that the odds that I'm having in these land reviews is that the community boards don't mean nothing and the councilman means everything. There's a problem with that, a big problem with that. Another thing, twenty-five percent, they want to dump their little apartments on the, on the guy who, you know, who's, you know, affordable housing, that is another thing. Now, the neighborhood, just like you guys said, the Bronx, they wanted to landmark their block beautiful, to put some kind of big building with no promises, no nothing, no union work, to come into this neighborhood, just like this, especially during these times, to rush this job, to hurry up and say yes, 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 to this. The Coalition of Rockways in Southeast Queens will always fight against these kind of projects, these kind of projects do nothing for the neighborhood, the community board is the neighborhood. So why isn't the community board's word, he keeps on saying the councilman, and my neighbor was destroyed by the councilman? So the community board voted against things, and then the councilman goes and he says he wants it? There's a, there's a kind of a problem with that. I know you guys think of me as rattling and raving, but I know what I'm talking about. And it'd be nice if you listened once in a while, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, questions for Mr. Jacobs? Okay, I will note that those are the only speakers who have signed up. Again, I would ask production if they have received any request for people to testify either by phone or via the N Y C Engage portal.
We just did a poll and we don't have any more speakers for this item.
Thank you, then the public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number thirteen, C D one, C two zero zero two three eight P C Q, in the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning the Department of Sanitation, Queens Sanitation Garage One.
We will have a ten-minute team presentation with a team comprised of Catherine Garcia, the Commissioner of D S N Y, Susan Baumgart from H D R, Steve Brautigan, who is D S N Y's Assistant Commissioner of Legal Affairs, and available for questioning is Jason Ortiz of D C A S. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Chair Lagos and Commissioners of the City Planning Commission. As you said, I am Catherine Garcia, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Sanitation, and I am joined by Steve Bronnham and Suzanne Baumgart, Project Manager for H D R. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on the proposed relocation of the department's Queens West District One sanitation garage and salt shed to thirty-one dash eleven twentieth Avenue, Loyster Creek site in the Queens Community District One. At the Department of Sanitation, our mission is to keep New York City healthy, safe and clean by collecting, recycling and disposing of waste, cleaning streets and vacant lots and clearing snow and ice. To accomplish this mission, the department, like the Police and Fire Department, relies on a network district garage embedded in our city's communities. D S N Y's districts are coterminous with each of the fifty-nine community districts across the five boroughs. As we have learned during the COVID nineteen pandemic, sanitation services are critical to the health and well-being of our city. The men and women who work at this department are among the most essential workers, and we have an obligation to provide them with clean, safe and appropriate facilities. Next slide. D S N Y's current Queens District One garage at thirty-four dash twenty-eight twenty-first Street, Astoria, Queens, is undersized and structurally deficient. The garage consists of an approximately thirty-seven thousand square foot building built in nineteen thirty-one on a sixty-two thousand square foot lot. This is far smaller than our average sanitation district garages, which have at least eighty thousand square feet of combined indoor and outdoor personnel space and equipment parking. This facility is already overtaxed and will not be able to meet the needs of a growing community in Western Queens. To accommodate operations, D S N Y uses a small one-acre overflow parking lot located two miles away, adjacent to the proposed site of the new Queens District One garage. This project also includes the relocation of a salt lot from the bed of an unbuilt street on Forty-third Avenue, west of Vernon Boulevard. Next slide. These photographs show what the garage looks like today. It is old, outdated and far too small to properly serve our employees and the surrounding community. Previously, the size of the rear yard forced D S N Y to park more than a dozen trucks on twenty-first Street and Thirty-fifth Avenue, directly in front of and across from playgrounds and residences. While we were able to eliminate the on-street parking several years ago by acquiring the overflow parking lot near adjacent to this Loyster Creek, there is no guarantee that we will be able to continue using that site in the future. At any point, we may be forced to return those trucks to the streets of this community. Next slide. The current facility is also in increasingly poor structural condition. While D S N Y has taken steps to ensure the facility remains safe for our employees and passersby at the current time, these interim measures will not suffice in the long term. A full rehabilitation of the garage would be quite costly and would certainly disrupt operations and services to the surrounding community. As we are forced to take additional interim steps to ensure the safety of this facility, it is likely that less and less of the floor area and rear yard will be usable for operations, further limiting our flexibility and effectiveness. Next slide. In addition, the current garage is sited in an R five zone and the use is non-conforming to current zoning. When the facility opened in nineteen thirty-one, none of the adjacent uses existed, but with the development of Western Queens over the past century, particularly the opening of Ravenswood Houses in the nineteen fifties, this use has become incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Today, the garage is surrounded on all four sides by public housing and playgrounds and is just a block away from the Queensview Co-op. Particularly due to its small size, cramped quarters and enclosed parking area, this facility has been the subject of a number of community complaints regarding safety, noise and air emissions. By vacating this property upon the successful completion of the new Queens One District Garage, we have the opportunity to pursue a community-led conversation about potential redevelopment for more appropriate and suitable use. Next slide. Turning now to the proposed project, D S N Y and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services seek to acquire approximately nine point eight acres of undeveloped industrial property as well as easements for vehicular and utility access adjacent to Loyster Creek in the Astoria Industrial Business Zone, also in Queens District One. The proposed project area includes block eight two six lot forty-two and part of lot, block eight five oh lot three fifty, and would facilitate the development of an approximately ninety-four thousand square foot sanitation garage and twenty thousand square foot salt shed. The proposed site is surrounded on three sides by industrial uses, including the expansive Con Ed facility north of twentieth Avenue. The site is ideally suited for a sanitation garage situated far from the nearest residential uses and providing adequate space for onsite parking and salt storage. The project will provide D S N Y's Queens District One workforce with a proper facility of adequate size to store and maintain equipment, provide personnel support spaces and enable D S N Y to continue providing Queens District One with refuse and recycling collection, cleaning and winter emergency services. While I will allow my colleagues to share the particular details about the proposed garage and the actions before this commission, I would just like to highlight a few factors. First, the proposed garage would incorporate state-of-the-art energy efficiency and environmental features. The building will incorporate sustainable design features, including low-flow water fixtures, the use of recycled materials makes me very happy, and rooftop solar panels that can provide three hundred and ninety kilowatts of electricity. The facility will also feature an advanced stormwater collection, storage and treatment system, preventing direct runoff from the site into Loyster Creek. D S N Y will pursue at least a lead silver accreditation, similar to our other recently completed facilities. Second, as the site directly abuts Loyster Creek, the proposed site layout and design accommodates the potential for future public waterfront access. At this time, given the city's dire financial situation resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic, it is not possible to commit to constructing a public waterfront esplanade as part of this project. But as Assistant Commissioner Brautigan will detail in a few minutes, we have left space to incorporate such a project on the site at a later date in the future. We understand the community's desire to improve access to the waterfront and we look forward to working with the members of the community to pursue this goal in the future. We have conducted a detailed environmental review for this application and we found that the facility will not have any significant adverse traffic, noise, air or odor impacts. We are proud of the fact that D S N Y's collection trucks use state-of-the-art technology and ultra-low sulfur B twenty biodiesel fuel and include particulate filters and NOx controls, making our fleet one of the cleanest in the nation. Since D S N Y began pursuing this site, representatives of the department have met numerous times with local elected officials, community board members and local leaders. These stakeholders have unanimously expressed support for the goal of moving the Queens District One garage from its current site. We strongly believe that the proposed site at Loyster Creek is the best place for the garage to move. This new state-of-the-art facility will ensure that we are able to provide high, efficient, quality sanitation services to Community District One well into the future. Thank you for your consideration today.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, this is Suzanne from H D R, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on the proposed project. Like we've stated, it's located at thirty-one eleven twentieth Avenue in Astoria, and it is zoned M three one, M one one, and that will continue. And it's on nine point eight acres of vacant land, and we are going to be proposing additional square footage for an access drive as well as a utility corridor. D S N Y will use only nineteenth Avenue for ingress and egress, as was committed by D S N Y. The garage is set back from the residential uses as well as the parks and the soccer field, and that will give us the containment of the property as desired. So the U L R P has been issued or to construct the new District One garage in the salt shed on the northern portion as it's depicted here. Next slide. So from this illustrative plan, we are showing again the ingress from nineteenth Avenue along towards, along the creek in order to gain access, and this is going to be the primary access for both the sanitation trucks and employees to the site at the rear. The other utility easement is going to be only obviously for the utilities coming from twentieth Avenue. The salt shed is approximately twenty thousand square feet and the building itself has approximately, is a footprint of seventy-three thousand square feet with approximately ninety-four thousand square foot gross building area.
I apologize, but the ten minutes have expired, so we'll now turn it over to Commissioners for questioning, starting with Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, well, first and foremost, I want to say hello to Commissioner Garcia and thank her for her excellent leadership of this vital city agency. And I would also, I would also express appreciation, which is not limited to me certainly, for your decision to relocate this facility from a NYCHA campus, something I'm sure will be welcomed by the residents there. This is a question that I would normally put to D C A S, but I don't know if anyone is there. This is a long-term lease, Commissioner, or is this an acquisition by the city of that property?
So the, the way that we have structured the U L R P is that it would, could be either. We have not completed, we would prefer to do negotiations and do a long-term lease, but we have not completed those negotiations yet.
Okay, I'm just curious, a long-term lease as opposed to an acquisition, outright acquisition, given the multimillion dollar investment that the city's going to make on the site?
Right, now, we are leaving it so that it's flexible in the U L R P for either one, and whichever is most cost-effective, I assume is what we would pursue, but obviously condemnation could make it so that our timing is pushed out further into the future, and you know, that is really challenging with the current state of the Queens One garage.
Understood, thank you.
For the record, I'm sorry, this is Jason Ortiz with D C A S, I am on the public hearing for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Capelli?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, I share.
I share Vice Chair Knuckles' comments, and I additionally thank you for not only your service to this agency, but with all of the hats that you wear in serving the city of New York, I thank you for that service as well. And I'm very pleased that this environmental justice-related project is being advanced by the administration as it will not only better serve your department, but will also remediate and alleviate problems in Western Queens by the removal. I'm a little distressed, however, to hear that the public access cannot be incorporated in this project. It would seem that, you know, for passive use for a project of this size, and I think many members of the commission discussed this in the review session the other day, particularly Commissioner Bernie had commented on this, that it would seem to be a fraction of the size of this project that would be needed in order to provide the community with access to a wonderful piece of property. And I was hoping that a hard look could be taken at how to move around some money in this project or beg, borrow, and acquire some additional funds to do that to really make this a home run. So that's my comments.
And I thank you for those comments. I think if it was six months ago, we would be in a much better position to be able to say that we could definitely do this just right at this point. We want to make sure that we are leaving the space for it so that, and we've done a lot of work on looking at what it could look like and how we how we are making sure that it could be incorporated in the future. It's just right at this moment, things are so incredibly dire financially that committing to it right now would would be very difficult for the administration.
Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Good to hear from you, Commissioner Garcia. It's been a while.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you, Derek.
So I just want to echo a couple of things that Commissioner Capelli said. I mean, obviously, we think it's a tremendous project. You're not only improving the operational efficiency of D S and Y, but also removing a non-residential use from the Ravenswood area, which is which is terrific. I was just thinking, you know, on the issue, I understand the budget problem, and you know, we'd also like our organic recycling back, but you know,
Yes, so would I.
That's life. But I'm wondering whether, you know, sometimes you your landscape architect comes up with a treatment for the whole waterfront, and that costs, you know, a decent amount of money. Is there a way to at least provide some kind of minimal temporary treatment so it doesn't look like a tip, you know, it looks, you know, without doing any elaborate landscaping, do some at least minimal treatment? So it looks half decent until such time as you do have some funding to complete the job.
So I mean, I don't know what that would cost at this point in time. We haven't looked at that per se. But certainly, we could look at that and so that it's not looking decrepit for long periods of time. But, you know, sort of, that would be very, very minimal in scope if it was could be incorporated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes, I just wanted to share the same comments that Commissioner Bernie and Commissioner Capelli stated. Also want to thank Commissioner Garcia and the Department of Sanitation for the work that they do, and just really make a comment saying that this is definitely a welcome change to the community, and I do hope that in the future they are able to incorporate waterfront access. That's really it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for questions from the commission. So thank you to the applicant team. We will now turn to speakers in opposition. Bruce Jacobs.
Good, good morning again. Bruce Jacobs, U S Navy veteran, nine eleven first responder. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for your work. But there is a big problem. My thing is caring more about the workers of this city. This city is ready to go spend millions and millions of dollars on a sanitation plant, yet they want to get rid of 22,000 workers. I want my sanitation union workers to be protected. It's nice that you make a beautiful place, you know, where the people could work. However, like you said, in the budget, in the times, in these times of troubles, how can the city go afford and spend money like that when there's other people losing jobs and they're not they're getting, you know, kicked out, they have no opportunities? This is a very bad time to be doing this, and you said you can't do the waterfront because of money? The waterfront should be part of this development because all these promises that the city is saying that they're doing, I don't see it in the streets here. So my thing is, I want jobs protected for the union workers, for the any kind of worker in this city. And by spending and spending money that you guys do not have, and then say that you can't do the waterfront, but you could do this place over that, and then you use N Y C H A, which I'm involved in housing, as an excuse why you're moving it. Now, the conditions of this place, yes, it needs to be moved. It needs to be fixed. But you can't commit why people are being laid off for their jobs and your city is ready to spend millions and millions. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And again, I will note that these are the only speakers on this matter. And Ryan, I would again ask if you could canvas to see if there are others who have evidence and interested in testifying on this matter?
Just a moment, I'll check in with our team. Okay. No, we have no other speakers on this. We just pulled the registration.
Thank you. So then the public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 14, CD 16, N 210008 PXK in the matter of the notice of intent to acquire office space for property located at 2440 Fulton Street.
There will be a 10-minute team presentation by an applicant team comprised of Lauren Wolf, James Lawler, George Donahue for questions, Nicholas Stewart, and Rizwana Sheikh. Before yours.
Yes, next slide, please. Hi, I'm Lauren Wolf, a senior vice president at E D C. I'm here today with George Donahue from DCAST and Jim Lawler from H R A. The As of Right Development in 2440 Fulton Street is the first project in E D C's Office Anchor Strategy Initiative, an initiative that was developed in conjunction with our partners at DCAST. The project is in service of the Human Resources Administration, H R A, which is a voluntary participant and anchor tenant of the development. We are here today due to the collective efforts of many people of the three agencies, E D C, DCAST, H R A, and of course, City Planning. H R A will be relocating offices from 275 Bergen Street and 250 Livingston to the project site. O A S serves to create investment in underactivated office markets throughout through the construction of office space for city workers while also providing office and retail space for non-city tenants. It works as follows. DCAST, working with E D C, identifies a tenant, an agency partner with unmet space requirements, and the lease expiration or space need that aligns with the time needed to complete construction of a new space. E D C brings the prospect of a long-term lease to the development community via a competitive procurement process, or R F P. O A S requires the proposed site's release includes space for private market tenants, too. This means that the proposals received through the procurement process and the project we ultimately pursue both respond to the city's needs and also contemplate the creation of office space of new office space and retail space for private market tenants as part of the same development. In other words, O A S leverages the prospect of an anchor tenant lease with the city to realize commercial space or market economics and other factors might otherwise make it impossible. Additionally, in cases where agency tenants vacate premises in a primary office market or space in a less established one, O A S creates opportunity for private market leasing or redevelopment to occur, thereby bringing in new private market jobs and investment to commercial centers across the city. We therefore see O A S as a vehicle, not only for meeting the city's space lease needs, but also for building a supply of real estate with which to bring jobs and economic activity to communities across New York City. Next slide. In keeping with the principles of O A S, the building at 2440 Fulton Street, about 326,000 zone square feet in size, will include approximately 80,000 rentable square feet of space for retailers and private market office tenants in addition to the space to be leased by the city. But the benefits of 2440 Fulton extend beyond O A S's commitment to spurring job creation and economic growth. 2440 Fulton and its surrounding neighborhood were the subject of the East New York Neighborhood Plan, which laid out a variety of community needs. The plan called for, among other things, increased commercial activation of the Broadway Junction corridor, and 2440 Fulton does just that. The building will feature over 40,000 rentable square feet of retail space on the building's ground floor. This retail, along with each of the site's three frontages, will meet the state of community need or new retail space while also bringing amenities to building workers and locals. The current design of the ground floor activates Van Cindern Avenue and Fulton and Herkimer Streets at this crucial location. Situated at the center of Broadway Junction, 2440 Fulton also models effective transit-oriented development, delivering density and activity in proximity to the A, C, L, J, and Z trains, L I R R, and assorted bus lines. With these features in mind, E D C strongly believes that the project writ large will be of immense benefit. It's a win for Broadway Junction, East New York, and for the city. Looking forward, we hope to have the lease fully executed by early 2021. That will enable construction to begin later in fall 2021, and substantial completion of the project is expected to be in late 2024 in time for H R A to move in to be complete in the summer of 2025. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to George Donahue from DCAST.
Great. Thank you. Next slide, please. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone and their families are fine. George Donahue, I'm the Assistant Director of Leasing in New York. The premises that the city will occupy within 2440 Fulton Street account for approximately 275,000. This includes space on the building's ground floor, client lobby, it's part of the third floor, entirety of the building's fourth, fifth at least meant to occur at the start of December 2024, from the city premises at 2440 Fulton Street. At that time, H R A will lease has a 21-year term, so we expect that H R A will occupy the premises. Much. I will now pass the present to my colleague, Jim Lawler.
Thank you, George. Jim Lawler, First Assistant Deputy Commissioner in Charge of Facilities for H R A. When this idea first arose several years ago, H R A immediately agreed to participate in E D C's Office Anchor Strategy, seizing the opportunity to make its services more accessible in an area where they're most needed. The, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Okay, so the map you are seeing here clearly shows the multiple rail and bus lines, and this vicinity has been described as transportation-rich. Next slide, please. The two maps you are seeing here function similarly to weather maps, wherein the darker colors indicator indicate greater intensities or, in H R A's case, greater densities of its client population. The map on the left shows one subset of clients, those receiving assistance to receive their maximum level of self-sufficiency and overcome barriers to employment. The second map indicates vulnerable families, and its densities mirror those of the first map. The dotted circle on both maps is the location of the proposed facility, and coupled with the prior public transportation maps, it is clear H R A's priority of making its services accessible where most needed will be met. Next slide, please. In addition to the geographic advantages, this project is yet another opportunity for H R A to replicate its state-of-the-art center, employing services, self-service, and other computer technologies to enhance and expedite the client experience. You might remember our newest center at 95 Evergreen Avenue, shown here and in the next two slides, where clients quickly check in, reducing the traditional in-person check-in from many minutes to seconds. This eliminates the front door logjam, and once checked in, clients move quickly to the next slide place. Move quickly to large waiting area where wall-mounted electronic signs display ticket numbers and direct clients to service windows and other areas. The entire process from check-in to conclusion is timed, allowing directors to enact changes as needed to preclude backlogs. Next slide, please. An alternative to going to waiting areas, clients may opt to continue self-service by submitting required documents electronically via scanners, shown here on the left, or using one of the many personal computers to apply for benefits online. Of course, of course, clients can apply for benefits from home, libraries, and other spaces via access H R A portal. This highly successful program has been proven most advantageous to those experiencing transportation or mobility challenges. In conclusion, locating a city agency in East New York has long been a priority for the mayor and the Brooklyn Borough President. Both have been encouraging the city to utilize its tendency as a strategic development tool. H R A is a willing participant in this transformative project and views advancing the region's economy as yet another way of enhancing the lives of those it serves. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is that the end of the team presentation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to to know how many actual positions or jobs will H R A transfer to this location when this project is completed?
It'll be close to 1,200 employees located at this facility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bellows.
Hi, thanks for your presentation. My question really is both about like timing, phasing, and also, you know, the I believe for the Bergen Street and Livingston Street properties, the city leases both. Are those leases coming to an end? Are you ending them early? Just a little bit more history or information about the existing properties as well.
So the existing properties are leased properties. The Bergen Street facility lease actually ends in 2024, slightly before the completion of this project, and our colleagues at DCAST will be working with that landlord to extend our tenancy until time to move. The 250 Livingston Street property is actually has a 10-year lease, but has an early termination right without penalties within the fifth anniversary, and E D C and DCAST have done a great job of scheduling and timing the completion of this project to coincide with those early termination rights.
Commissioner Capelli.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to see the city using its resources to encourage development, economic support in boroughs outside of Manhattan. So thank you for bringing this project before us. I was wondering what kind of changes have taken place to this plan, or are they still underway in dealing with the new normal of of COVID or other potential COVID-19 successor for the future?
Okay. You know, right now, as you mentioned, we're very much in the beginning stages of the of the design. It's all conceptual at this point. You know, we're all optimistic, I'm sure you are too, that by 2025, the pandemic will be over and be back to some semblance of normalcy. But going forward, I think the lesson learned is in all our facilities, social distancing and indoor environment will become far more important, and I'm sure this and all our future designs will be reflective of those requirements.
Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to comment, not being in close proximity to the chair, I don't know if the Borough President has signed up, but we did get a letter in support of this project from the Borough President, and again, I pile on the applause that has been stated on it, so I just wanted to commend H R A E D C on the on this. So I just wanted to commend HRA EDC on this wonderful project, which is going to be transformative for the Broadway Junction area. Thank you.
I'm still marveling at the 1,200 jobs, just the scale of it. Commissioner Deloos, did you have additional comments or questions?
I did not, sorry. I should lower my hand.
Okay, then with that, I will thank the applicant team, and will now move on to public testimony, starting with testimony in opposition, Bruce Jacobs.
Good morning, everybody. Again, Bruce Jacobs, a U.S. Navy veteran, 9/11 first responder. This is another, first of all, I would like to know where the councilman and assemblywoman of East New York stand on this. You say most-needed neighborhood, that's because of all these programs that you dumped in that neighborhood. Another question that I'm asking is that with all this, with the layoffs of over 22,000 possible workers or more, and no safety in the streets, and all kind of other things going on, you're going to spend all kind of money that you don't have to build a place like this. This is something else. It's beautiful, but in these times are covert. And you're begging the federal government for money, and then you're in a deficit that's so unbelievable, that how can you afford to do a project like this? You say 1,200 jobs. I like to see how 1,200 jobs is coming to an office that really is going to be cut because it's on the computer. Another thing that I have in opposition to this is that you use economic development, that name, as an excuse. You guys can do nothing for far away, and you say economic development. What kind of economic development? And you say all this office space besides the HRA, people can't even afford to pay for office space in the city. And now you're proposing more office space and businesses? Before you pass things like this, you really should. Look what you could spend. Look at your budget. Your budget is about to lay off people, and you're going to go and spend this kind of money? I can't see it. Another thing, how does the community board feel about it? You guys throw in the Queensborough President and, you know, his name in there. What about the community? What about the community board? What about the Assemblyman? What about the Councilwoman? I'd like to know what they feel about this. Because it sounds all good, a beautiful building. You say economic development, you say most-needed. The whole city needs help now because this budget, you can't afford to build stuff like that now. And disabled and computer-illiterate people cannot be involved in this. This is really something else. If you say you don't have the money, and you're going to lay off 22,000 people to pass something like this, you should look over the numbers of this, and he's giving you promises and all this. We've heard those promises all the time from HRA and the homeless and all that. I like to see these things because you got to get your city back before you start putting in jobs like this. This is millions and millions and millions of dollars. We know guaranteed that this city is going to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Your time has expired. Questions for Mr. Jacobs? Thank you for your testimony. And once again, Ryan, I will turn it over to you to see if others who hadn't registered have evidenced an interest in testifying either by phone or through NYC Engage.
Yes, let me, let me check on that. No others. No others have signed up. Thank you.
Okay.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 15.
Let us first close the prior public hearing, and now please, Madam Secretary.
Sorry. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 15, CD3C200155HAK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a U-DAB designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Decal Commons. This hearing will be continued to September 16, 2020.
Okay, so we have people available to testify now, although we will note that the public hearing will be continued. If I could ask, Ryan, is this a team presentation or individual presentations?
It is a team presentation.
Okay, so we will then have a 10-minute team presentation with a team comprised of Makita Marshall Neesmith, Philip Hoffman, and Gordon Bell. And available for questioning are Lynn Zhang from HPD, and Brian Hossen from St. Nick's Alliance, and Sarah Bayer. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Makita Marshall Neesmith, and I am a Brooklyn planner in the Office of Neighborhood Strategies at HPD. Along with me today to present Decal Commons, a 100% affordable housing project in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood, are representatives from the development team, St. Nick's Alliance and Bed-Stuy Restoration. Next slide, please. HPD is requesting disposition of eight vacant city-owned lots for the development
I'm sorry, we've lost the audio feed. Would another member of the team?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, yes. HPD is requesting the disposition of eight vacant city-owned lots for the development of three new construction buildings under HPD's Extremely Low and Low-Income Affordability Ella Program. The proposed project was selected through the NIHOP and NCP requests for qualifications released in December 2014, with the goal to create the development of homeownership and rental opportunities through small homes and mid-sized rental buildings on scattered city-owned sites. St. Nick's Alliance and Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration were chosen in April 2017. The proposed project will result in a total of 84 units, with mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units, all affordable to households and individuals up to 80% of area median income. The proposed project was certified for U-LUP in December 2019, and HPD is requesting designation of an urban development action area, project approval of an urban development action area project, and disposition approval of the city-owned property for these three city-owned As you see on this map, two of the sites are located across from each other on Decal between Nostrand Avenue and Marcy Street. The last site is a smaller site on the commercial corridor along Fulton Street. All three sites are located within Community Districts 3 and City Council District 36. Now I will turn the presentation over to Philip Hoffman to provide project and program details to Decal Commons.
Hello, my name is Philip Hoffman, Project Manager at St. Nick's Alliance and partner with Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation for the development of the Decal Commons project. Next slide, please. The first site of our project is 633-639 Decal Avenue, which is located north of Decal Avenue between Nostrand and Marcy Avenues. The site is near public transportation, schools, playgrounds, a community garden, the Costco, Costco pool, supermarkets, and other local businesses. Next slide, please. This is a seven-story elevator building, including a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, for a total of 37 units. The building will include a laundry room and rear children's play and sitting area. The building will be designed by architect Magnuson Architecture and Planning to Passive House principles, including solar panels, high-performance building envelope and ventilation, and energy-efficient mechanical systems. There are several benefits that this Passive House design could provide to the tenants, including better indoor air quality, reduced indoor noise pollution, and lower utility bills due to its airtight design and extreme insulation. The Passive House design may also have a role in controlling the spread of viruses due to its required ventilation filtration performance goals. Due to the design, the project has been approved up to Tier 3 incentives through the NYSARDA multifamily new construction program, and the project has also submitted for a NYSARDA Buildings of Excellence grant that would assist in further sustainability measures. Next slide, please. 648-654 Decal Avenue is located south of Decal Avenue, adjacent to the Costco, Costco pool, and across the street from Site 1. Next slide, please. The building is a seven-story elevator building, including a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, for a total of 45 units. This building will include a laundry room and children's play area and sitting area. This building also includes a community room to be shared by both Decal buildings. The design is similar to Site 1, designed to Passive House principles. Next slide, please. 1187 Fulton Street is located between Spencer Place and Bedford Avenue, and is within walking distance of Community Board 3 and our partners at Restoration. The site is near multiple schools, playgrounds, the Brooklyn Children's Museum, supermarkets, and other local businesses. Next slide, please. The building is a four-story walk-up, including three two-bedroom units and a retail space on the ground floor. The building will be designed as an energy-efficient building, including efficient appliances, lighting, and mechanical equipment. Next slide, please. In summary, Decal Commons is a three-building project that includes 84 affordable residential units, a super's unit, and retail space with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. More than 50% of these units are designed for families. Next slide, please. The project will serve low-income households earning 30% to 80% of the area median income, including units designated for formerly homeless persons. You can see a chart of the projected incomes and rents. I would now like to invite our partner Gordon Bell from Bedford-Stuyvesant Restoration Corporation to speak. Next slide, please.
Thank you. It's Gordon Bell, Executive Vice President of Bed-Stuy Restoration, and it is an honor to be with you this morning. Thank you for the efficiency of this meeting. It's amazing to see. St. Nick's is one of the oldest and most accomplished community development corps, just like Bed-Stuy. They started in 1975. We started in 1967. We just completed the Brooklyn Bundle acquisition for NYCHA-RAD. It's the biggest transaction restoration's ever done, over 2,600 units. Together, we have over 5,000. We've done deep rehabs, tenant-in-place rehabs. We have been committed to making our communities more healthy, more caring, and more connected between our real estate activities and our social services activities. It's a thrill to be here and bring a project we think has a lot of art and science together. Next slide, please. What we really believe is that we have the ability to bring 84 new units of housing in a period of time when we have seen incredible change in Bed-Stuy. The increase in white residents was 1,235% from 2000 to 2015. That's 38,000 people. While the African-American population at Bed-Stuy decreased 48% through 2019. It's kind of staggering. We don't want to get into the arguments of whether it's, you know, causation, correlation, and statistical significance. We want to get into the argument that creating more affordable housing, while market rate housing is exploding, is the right thing to do to preserve the quality of neighborhoods, to preserve tradition, and to preserve the city that we love. We believe that by doing this project, we're going to create some real economic development in an area that desperately needs it, where there were no summer jobs this year, and very few jobs, and a lot of folks losing their jobs. If we can get this project going on time, we will probably keep more residents, and we will be using the lottery system mechanisms that allow for local preferences for folks who are from the neighborhood, who've lived in the neighborhood, and want to stay in this neighborhood. We are excited about the fact that we're going to be super-energy efficient and leaders in providing excellent housing to folks who are living probably right now in tough situations, including, remember, formerly homeless. So with that, I thank you, and I ask for this call of action to move forward on this project, and we will be happy to go on to the next two slides with Philip. If you can rejoin.
Yes, the current timeline, the project is currently proceeding through the U-LUP process and anticipating U-LUP approval in fall of this year. We anticipate submitting a 9% tax credit application in the spring of 2021, and hope to close on financing in the summer of 2021, and commencement of construction immediately after. Construction completion is estimated in the winter of 2023, and occupancy soon after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to the applicant team, and I will open it to questions from the commission. Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I mean, first of all, I really want to commend St. Nick's Alliance and Bed-Stuy Restoration, that they have been anchors in this community, you know, back from the disinvestment days of the 70s and on, and right through now to sort of fighting displacement and gentrification. They've been there all the time. And I agree with, it's very important to do this type of project. And I'd also just commend Magnuson Architects on what I think looks like a really good quality of design. Although we haven't seen any apartment layouts, I don't know if that has been submitted as part of the package, but some of the floor plans, it might be worth submitting those also. I just have one sort of minor comment about the design, and that is that in Site 1, where you have ground-floor apartments, there's also always that issue of privacy, and it's often solved by putting planting to screen those apartments from the street. And I'm always concerned about how those planters are going to be maintained, because they can very quickly deteriorate into sort of refuse collection pits if they're not properly looked after. So I wonder what provisions would be made to take care of that.
Hi, this is Frank Lang from St. Nick's Alliance. We're going to be the management agent for the property. So we, we agree with you that having landscaping and everything will deteriorate if it's not maintained. And so we do have a contract with a landscaping company that does maintain any open spaces for the residents, as well as these kind of barriers, or I would, you know, screening on the streets. And so all of our buildings have that where appropriate, and that is part of the underwriting and operations of the project.
That's reassuring. Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
I have a similar comment to Commissioner Bernie, which is, you know, commending the development team for, for great design, and quite honestly, you know, pushing Passive House, which is absolutely critical. And Frank, you started to answer my question, which is, just kind of going through the roles that each of the development partners will play in different aspects of the project. That would, that would be helpful to understand.
Sure. So the development is a joint venture with St. Nick's Alliance, and Bed-Stuy Restoration is, as co-developers. St. Nick's has the staff and with direct experience. So we are the project managers and coordinating the project through planning and construction and development. But we are making joint decisions throughout the process. Once the project is completed construction, St. Nick's Alliance is going to be the property management agent, as well as doing the marketing and lease-up of the project. And then we will be co-owners and asset managers of the project upon completion and operation. Just for the commission's information, we do have any floor plans in the slides after the, you know, if people wanted to see them. But they're also in the presentation following this slide.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin.
It's cool, though. I would add that this is not our first joint rodeo. St. Nick's and Restoration have worked with the joint ownership entity, the Joe, to do another large transaction that involved 88 buildings this last summer. So we are working together productively, and we individually and jointly developed, brought up, and made your work before.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin. Yes, I have to acknowledge there are just a tremendous number of very positive features of this proposed development. I share the comments of my previous, colleagues who spoke previously about the quality of the design and the value of bringing this kind of housing to this neighborhood. But I think in this public hearing, it's important to acknowledge that this project, the building on Site 2, will have a significant adverse impact that just can't be mitigated, and that is the shadows that will be cast on the Costco pool. I wonder what conversations you may have had with folks in the community about that, what thought you've given to it, and if you could explain a little bit how it might change the use and if you could explain a little bit how it might change the use patterns at the pool in the summer. I imagine when it's a super-hot day, it doesn't so much matter what the shadow on the pool is, but it is a real, will be a real impact for this community.
Hi, Anna. This is Lynn from HPD. So this, as you noted, will have a negative impact on the pool, and we have worked with parks on this particular issue. And the summer of last year, we held a scoping hearing in CB3, sort of the same building that Community Board Three has their office. And at the time, we did not get any, we didn't get anyone from the public to speak about this. And I believe the Chair of CB3 also signed up to speak on this project, so perhaps he could speak a little bit about the impacts, the shadow impacts on the pool. We also looked at, you know, in terms of mitigating it, the only way to mitigate is to reduce two or three stories on that building at Site Two. And under the current design, that would be a loss of around, I believe that Sarah can confirm, around thirty units. And for a project that, you know, that is not an insignificant number of units, losing that amount would, you know, essentially make this project sort of infeasible in this current fighting structure. So I'm not able to speak to how that would change the use of the pool. But maybe we could look into that.
Okay, thank you. I understand there are trade-offs in everything we do, and this is, you know, perhaps a very entirely acceptable trade-off or just an impact that we can't do anything about. But I think it's important in this public process that we be honest and forthcoming about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, this is Frank Lang. The environmental impact looked at a shadow of approximately an hour and a half to two hours, mostly in the, at the end of the day, really for about a month or a month and a half onto the pool area. That is what the impact would be. And the community, when we presented this, this also was presented at that hearing and to the community U L R P and Land Use Committee, and the residents were more concerned about the need for affordable housing than the modest period of time that the building would have a shadow, a west, you know, caused west shadow at the end of the day.
If I were to paraphrase Councilman Robert Carnegie Jr. at the New York Real Estate Chamber Conference where he spoke, he said, "Having a shadow for a couple of hours earlier in the evening on the kids in the hot summer versus eighty-four units of affordable housing for families all year, I think you can guess which one I'd pick."
Thanks for that, and it goes to Commissioner Levin's comments about trade-offs. And for us, it's always helpful being explicit about what the trade-offs are.
I don't see any other raised hands from commissioners, and so I will thank the applicant team. And we will now turn to speakers in opposition, starting with Bruce Jacobs.
Good morning again. Bruce Jacobs, U.S. Navy veteran, nine-eleven first responder.
Mr. Jacobs, we've lost your audio feed.
Oh, yeah. Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes, you're back.
Okay. HPD has promised these things in the past and hasn't come true. What I'm hearing, when he said predominantly for only African-American families, I know that sounds good and this kind of thing, but there are African-Americans that do very good for themselves, and they do own homes in their neighborhood, and they like to know what's going on. The way he emphasized the used race as a reason for this, this is a lottery system. This is not just given to whoever he wants to give to get city money. This is things that have to be done for the neighborhood, real promises. He's showing you a pretty picture of the building. He says for formerly, for a lot of formerly homeless. Now, I'm going to ask him that. I'm not asking him, but I'm bringing it up. People need programs, and if you're going to just give a guy an apartment, because I have a lot of veteran friends that are homeless, that they got apartments, and then they lost the apartments because they never got off drugs. They never got taken care of their mental problems. They never had anybody to go speak with. He's saying like as if they're just giving an apartment to somebody without help. I'd like to really know what he means by that. But HPD has a habit of always throwing race into rental. That's not true, because everybody has an opportunity and is doing good. And I have plenty of people on my coalition, in my civic, that also feel the same way, because you don't separate people and talk about things as if that's the reason you're getting, like, he's talking trade-offs. In my neighborhood, you put two affordable homes, so-called affordable homes in my neighborhood, and we're across the street suffering with crime and all kind of other stuff. What's he going to do about security? What kind of jobs to build these buildings? Are they going to use union labor? Or are they just going to hire like whoever they can off the streets to give them a job? That's another instance, because it should be equally distributed lottery system, no favoritism, no nothing for getting an apartment. And he's saying eighty percent of the income in Bed-Stuy, that's a lot higher than other neighborhoods. And he's been there for all those years, and he says he's fighting, he's talking now about gentrification? That same group was involved in the gentrification of Bed-Stuy. And he's promising the world, and he's talking trade-offs, well, we want guarantees. Neighborhoods, people that live there, we want guarantees. Fix up the neighborhoods and the people that need it in the neighborhood before you just rush and build buildings by income.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Questions for Mr. Jacobs?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a statement that Mr. Jacobs is right, that the affordable housing will be made available through an affordable housing lottery system that is absolutely highly competitive. I'll just point out, though, that the provision of affordable housing, especially at the AMI levels that Saint Nick's and Bed-Stuy Restoration are proposing here and that HPD is supporting, will absolutely affirmatively further fair housing.
Commissioner Knuckles.
Yes, Chair. Just an observation. I listened very closely to the testimony on the part of the sponsors, and I did not hear any reference to this housing being provided exclusively for anyone of any ethnicity. Thank you.
Thank you both for the clarifications. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And Ryan, I will once again check to see if others had indicated that they would like to testify either by phone or through M Y C Engage.
Yes, let me check the staff. And we have no other speakers on this.
Okay, we will then note that this hearing is going to be continued to September sixteenth, twenty twenty. And with that, back to you, Madam Secretary.
Citywide, calendar number sixteen. C two zero zero one four three M M Y. A public hearing in a matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Rikers Island Public Place Mapping.
Okay, our first presentation by a representative of the applicant is Dana Kaplan.
Great. Is the audio working?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having us, commissioners. I'm Dana Kaplan with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and we're here to present on the Rikers Island Public Place U L R P application. Next slide, please. So just briefly, we'll talk about why we are here today, how we got here, and then I will turn it over to my colleague with the Department of Corrections to talk about the Rikers Island Public Place U L R P application itself. Next slide. So I know that the commissioners are very familiar with this topic, so we won't spend too much time on it. But of course, we did think that it was important to ground this discussion in this particular U L R P application in the urgency of the moral imperative of closing Rikers Island and that the closure of the jails on Rikers Island are a key cornerstone of our administration's criminal justice reform goals. We understand that recidivism and violence reduction efforts are limited by Rikers' design and location. The facilities are not up to modern standards. The location and its isolation can lead to barriers to visiting family, loved ones, providers, and also can be a negative impact in getting people to the courts in a timely fashion. Next slide. So we last year went through a public approval process to propose a set of borough-based facilities that would enable the closure of Rikers Island. And very quickly, what we seek to achieve by moving to a borough-based detention system is facilities that are designed for better health, educational, and social outcomes, critically that they have greater access to families, social service providers, and community service providers, better lines of sight and smaller housing units to make a more safe environment, both for people in detention and for facility staff, a focus on a more normative environment, and to underpin and support our efforts to increase safety for everyone. Again, smaller units, more space for programming. The effort to replace the jails on Rikers Island with a smaller system is both about addressing historical failures and challenges of the jails on Rikers Island, but also refashioning a totally transformed system of justice that can deliver better outcomes to people across New York. Next slide. And I will turn it over to Sasha Ginsburg from the Department of Corrections. But as I said, you know, when there was the vote on October seventeenth, twenty nineteen, to support the U L R P for four borough-based facilities and to close the jails on Rikers.
Ms. Kaplan, I'm afraid that your time is up, and so I will now turn it over to commissioners for any questions they may have of Ms. Kaplan. Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, Ms. Kaplan. I'm wondering if you could, I think we're pretty clear on the reasons how we got here. I'm just wondering if you could clarify why the choice of a public place designation seemed to be the best approach to achieve the goals of ensuring that the space isn't used as part of any criminal justice and policing efforts in the future.
So our second presenter is Sasha Ginsburg from the Department of Corrections, who will speak to the public place presentation. So maybe we can have her, there's additional slides that go into that, that perhaps she can close with, and then I can, you know, support with any answers.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm afraid, Ms. Kaplan, that because this was not signed up as a team presentation, you will not be able to come back again. So I would ask commissioners to focus on any questions that they have for Ms. Kaplan now. Our next comes from Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to know what actions are going to be taken to address the community board's concern, as well as the borough president's concerns with regards to, say, removal of debris, future development. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so I can say that we are committed to working very closely with the community boards. You know, at this point, all we are seeking is the public place designation, which Sasha will walk through. We do not have a plan for what the future of Rikers Island itself will be, you know, and will be engaging in a community planning process towards that end. And as part of that, are very committed to working with the constituents, the stakeholders, and community boards on all sorts of questions, both in terms of what the future use of the island is, as well as the, of course, critical concerns such as, you know, debris removal once we get to that point. But that itself is a long way off.
Okay, and one last question. Due to all that's happening, has there been a delay? Or can you give us an update on the status? Are you still holding to the same delivery dates in terms of, for this project?
So we do believe that there will be an impact of COVID on this project, but we are currently moving it ahead and working as quickly as possible. We're analyzing what impact that may be of, you know, the COVID delay that we had, and we will make sure that we get you an updated schedule as soon as possible, and certainly are seeking to do so in advance of your vote.
Thank you.
I would note an emphasis not on seeking to, but the necessity of getting it in advance of the vote.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dweck.
Commissioner Rampershot touched on my question, which was pretty much about the timeline and the delays due to COVID. So again, for your comments, certainly it's imperative that we get an update on that from the city prior to vote.
Vice President Knuckles.
Thank you. And regarding the information, I assume that would address the issue of the date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six as the date beyond which any carceral use of this location would be prohibited. I assume there'll be a, an alternate date provided?
So any modifications that we would have to make to that date specifically as part of this U L R P application will, of course, be guided by what the updated schedule is for completion of the borough facilities. And to state more affirmatively, we will have that updated schedule to share with you in advance of the vote. And then obviously, if there's any change that needs to occur in the U L R P application to the two thousand twenty-six timeline, we would seek that amendment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. Actually, that previous series of questions from my colleagues covered my main question here. But I would, in fact, be interested in seeing the rest of the presentation. So if there are not any other members of the applicant team who are signed up to speak, I wonder if MacJ could provide us a digital copy of the presentation so we could look at it at a later date.
Great. We'll get it and distribute it to the commissioners. And Commissioner Capelli.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, I was actually going to suggest, I guess, in a same, in a similar vein, if we could in the next couple of months, get a, have a review session, a presentation, and an update on where all of this is going so that we can ask questions that aren't specifically related to this particular item that's before us at the moment.
Yes, this item will come to us, will come back for post-hearing follow-up, obviously, prior to the vote. And the commission will likely recall that at the time of the vote on the broader Rikers project, there was a commitment to do periodic updates, and the department is working with MacJ, with D D C, with Corrections, working on the next update to the commission on broader questions that go beyond just the public place designation.
And we may have someone signed up, just to, I want to make sure that it's clear that Sasha Ginsburg did sign up as a member of the presentation team and is available to walk you through just the final slides.
Yes, Ms. Ginsburg will be next, but as you didn't sign up as for a team presentation, we then have the two of you speaking individually. And so we will have Ms. Ginsburg, once this line of questioning is done, make, have her three minutes for the presentation and then questioning by the commission.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, I'm sorry. This might be redundant, given that we've got more presentation to come. But I just wanted to note that the public place mapping leaves the Rikers Island with the underlying C eight-two zoning, which may not be the most appropriate zoning for the future of the island. But the intent of this is to prevent its use for incarceration, and I'm assuming that under any new plan, that C eight-two zoning would be reviewed and amended.
Correct. What we are seeking to do with this application is to prohibit the use of incarceration on Rikers Island. That is the totality of our objective here, to ensure that it's a public place and that it cannot be used to incarcerate anyone. The actual, any changes that would have, that would happen as a result of what is determined as the appropriate new use would be through a separate process.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other raised hands. So thank you, Ms. Kaplan, for the presentation, and our- And our next speaker will be Sasha Ginsburg.
Hi, thank you very much, Chair Lago and the Commission. My name is Sasha Ginsburg, and I'm the Executive Director of the Borough-Based Jail System at the Department of Correction. And to move through this quickly, as I believe the commission is aware, that the proposed borough-based jail system will provide housing for a total of 3,300 people. And in order to do so, we are building approximately 3,544 beds. We are, this plan is a dramatic decarceration plan. We are proposing a much smaller system within New York. So with that, we will go to the next slide, please. So this is just some really, you know, background information. Rikers Island lies within the borough of the Bronx, but is under the jurisdiction of Queens Community District and Board One, and so those were the bodies that we sought for the public hearing. And the applicant team is the Department of Correction, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and the New York City Council Speaker Cory Johnson. And as my colleague Dana mentioned, we are seeking, the ULR application is seeking a change to the city map for the whole of Rikers Island to become a public place. And next slide, please. So again, as we've discussed, we are seeking a public place designation to ensure that any future development on the site of Rikers Island will be solely for public benefit. Rikers Island, oh, Rikers Island could no longer be used for the incarceration of individuals after December 31, 2026, when the city's borough-based jail system is expected to be completed and in operation. And as Dana mentioned, and as we've discussed, the city is presently, you know, reviewing the overall schedule, and we will submit any revisions to the schedule and to the application prior to the commission's vote in October. Next slide. And also, as we have discussed, we are only seeking the city map change to designate Rikers Island as a public place with the text change that says it will prevent the use, the use of Rikers Island for the incarceration of individuals, and there are no other actions, uses, or development proposed. Any new use would require a separate land use and environmental review process. Next slide, please. And this is just the picture of the city map with the red line outlining the space of Rikers Island that we are seeking the city map change with the corresponding text change to. And I believe that this is it. That is the end of the presentation. So you can go to the next slide. It's just a title slide. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Delos.
Sasha, thanks for being here. I'm glad you guys were able to get your presentation. So, you know, when we, when this was discussed in review session, you know, it would just be helpful to kind of have a little background about why the public place designation was chosen versus other strategies to achieve this goal. And I'm just wondering, where is public benefit defined? And how is it defined? And can that be subject to interpretation in the future that might undermine, I think, the shared goals that everyone has here for the future of the island not being used for incarceration purposes?
Appreciate the question. So I will actually get back to the commission with the specific kind of background information that we went through, I believe, you know, with the Department of City Planning at the beginning of this ULR application, to specifically choose the public place designation. I don't actually have that answer offhand immediately, but I will make sure to follow up with, you know, the answers as to why that was chosen and how we believe that the public place designation will work for the public benefit for all.
And we'll be prepared to address this during post-hearing follow-up.
Absolutely.
Other questions for Ms. Ginsburg? Okay, thank you for your testimony. I want to confirm, Ryan, that there are no other applicant representatives who are signed up to speak?
That is correct. The others have just indicated they're in favor or in opposition.
Okay, so we will start with our practice of beginning after the applicant presentation with those in opposition, and our first speaker will be Bruce Jacobs.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Bruce Jacobs, United States Navy veteran, 9/11 first responder. This is during these times, first of all, of COVID, the disabled and the computer illiterate are left out of this, out of this process. I don't care what anyone says. Now, another thing, with all the crime, with everything going on in the streets of New York, why is the rush to make a, you say, public benefit? Is it a public benefit that there's no, that there's crime in the streets and there's no place to send people right now? This is something that, I don't understand the rush. What about the neighborhood? What about the safety of us, of the people, of New York City? We deserve answers to this. When this was passed, this wasn't all going on. This was before the Nobel. This was before all the things. But you don't have enough buildings to build in other places, and now you're rushing to put a public benefit so that they can never use Rikers Island again? What if crime goes, goes so bad that they have to put, put people in prison, which we want to help them, but what if they have to? Where are they going to be put? In the streets and hotel shelters? There was a couple of councilmen at City Hall meeting, which I went to, and they called it a land grab. I'm not going to mention names, because I'm not allowed to mention their names, but they called it a land grab, and it was right. They're right about that. With the situation of the streets of New York with no safety for, for, for overbiding citizens, with the police being hampered, with no arrest, with everybody being released no matter what, to close Rikers Island totally with no chance that they have to do something else except make a public benefit, which they can't even explain what that public benefit is. We, the people of New York City, the Bronx, Manhattan, Staten Island, Queens, we want to know what's going to happen to our streets. Are people going to be, ever, if they kill somebody, are they going to be in jail? And where are they going to be put? You say you're building neighborhood places for these people. You might not have enough, and you're rushing to make sure that Rikers Island ain't used. Why? Because it's a land grab. And the Coalition of Rockers will always fight for the protection of New York City, the people of our streets. We want safety. We want, you know, things for the prisoners, but we also want safety in the streets. And I don't see it with this program, but you're, but you're bringing up, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Candora Clark.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, yes, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm on, I'm in opposition of any delays to the process. My name is Candora Clark. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Strategy with Exodus Transitional Community. We're a reentry preventative and advocacy organization with locations in East Harlem, as well as sites upstate New York. And we were, you know, and as, along with several other coalition leaders and members, you know, we were all for the closure of Rikers Island. With December 31, 2026, the official close date, you know, we know right now that the land is not habitable for human beings. So right now, we are leaving people on Rikers Island potentially until 2026, knowing that the land is not habitable for human beings, and I think we need to keep that at the forefront. So any delays in this process would be very detrimental to, you know, New Yorkers who have been disenfranchised for far too long, who have experienced inequalities and inequities, have had lack of resources in their communities. And these borough-based facilities, this is one step in the right direction, you know, reducing the number of the population. Also, we have already reduced it down to 3,800, and that was not expected to be reduced as quickly as we have been able to do so. So we also believe that, you know, there should be no delays in, in building these buildings and getting this done, especially because as advocates, we've been able to, you know, invest in alternatives to incarceration and really continue to decrease the numbers, the population of people that are on there. And in addition, you know, we've also convened for the last couple of years the Renewable Rikers Act. The bills have been introduced in legislation, and I just want to reiterate that on the record as well, that for the public land use, what we want to do on Rikers Island afterwards is really create renewable energy sources. We could close down 13 peaker plants that are across the, you know, city that were used placing environmental racism, and we could create affordable housing in those communities as opposed to trying to create any kind of housing on land that is not habitable for human beings on Rikers Island. So I just, you know, I'm hoping that the commission can look at this really strategically and long-term and see what's the best opportunity for the entire city as a whole. By closing this, we're not only doing what's morally correct, we're, we're really fiscally investing in our city. We know the costs of running Rikers Island are enormous, and with these borough-based facilities, we can have a lot more reduced cost with that. And then with the Renewable Rikers Act, you know, really creating that renewable energy source, our entire city is going to be healthier, they're going to have, you know, cleaner air to breathe. That's really going to impact all of our communities, especially Bronx and the Queens, that really feel the most detriment from, like, health concerns. So again, just fully in support of.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Clark. Your, your three minutes have expired, and I'll ask if any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Clark. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Sarah Imperiale.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Good afternoon, commissioners. The Natural Resources Defense Council, NRDC, is a not-for-profit advocacy organization active on a wide range of public health and environmental issues across the country and in New York City, where our headquarters have been located since our founding in 1970. For 50 years, NRDC has had a team of attorneys, scientists, and other experts working on quality-of-life issues and environmental matters important to New Yorkers, including support for safe drinking water, clean energy, sustainable waste handling, and environmental justice. We are pleased to join this meeting today in support of a change to the city map establishing a public place designation of Rikers Island, an important step in forever closing the Rikers Island jail complex and prohibiting future incarceration there. Closure of, closure of the Rikers jails presents an unparalleled opportunity to transform an inhumane jail complex with a long and troubling history into a model for modern environmental services that will benefit New York City and its residents for decades to come. The proposed amendment before the Planning Commission would establish Rikers Island in its entirety as a public place. This designation would mean that Rikers could no longer use, be used for incarceration by 2027. While NRDC supports the proposed city map amendment before the Planning Commission today, we believe the Renewable Rikers package of bills now pending in City Council must also be advanced to ensure that the jail complex is permanently closed and that efforts to convert Rikers Island into a hub of environmental sustainability and green jobs for city residents can move forward expeditiously. A commitment to greening Rikers Island means being able to invest in crucial infrastructure upgrades while reducing the need for aging, heavily polluting facilities that are disproportionately sited in overburdened areas of New York City, predominantly neighborhoods that low-income people of color call home. For example, dedicating a portion of Rikers' 413 acres to generating solar power would provide New York City with an abundance of clean and reliable energy. It would also allow the city to move older fossil fuel peaker plants offline in outer residential neighborhoods, providing a benefit for environmental justice communities who bear the brunt of the localized air pollution these plants create. In furtherance of this vision for our Renewable Rikers, NRDC urges the City Planning Commission to amend the city map to designate Rikers Island as a public place. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Imperiale? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Melissa Iken.
Good afternoon, at this point. My name is Melissa Ashan, and I am a Senior Staff Attorney in the Environmental Justice Program at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. NLPY works with communities across the New York City area to combat inequality, injustice, and infringement of civil rights. We have long partnered with the movement to close Rikers due to our strong belief that decrepit facilities built on a deteriorating landfill pose serious health hazards to all detainees and employees on Rikers Island. NLPY spent more than two years collecting documents from various city agencies regarding the environmental conditions at Rikers and detainee health conditions. Our survey showed that the environmental conditions at Rikers Island correctional facilities pose a direct threat to human health and well-being. In particular, the plumbing is so dysfunctional that facilities systematically fail to provide clean running water and properly working sewage systems, contributing to conditions that exacerbate a number of illnesses and health challenges for detainees, COVID-19 being only the most recent. The picture that these documents paint illustrates the urgency to close the island as a correctional facility as soon as possible. NLPY supports the current proposal to amend the city map to establish Rikers Island as a public place by no later than January 1, 2027. Our hope is that the island's jails are shuttered in advance of that date, though, as each and every day that human beings continue to be detained there represent our city, violating the human dignity and rights of those individuals. Nobody deserves to be confined in such squalid conditions, in particular during a pandemic of the proportion of COVID. If the urgency to push through a solution to permanently shutter these jails weren't evident enough before, after these last few months, we hope that this is something that most can agree on. We must close Rikers as soon as possible and by no later than January 1, 2027. We urge every commissioner and city official whose input will be required to continue to listen to the impacted individuals and survivors of Rikers as this process moves forward, and in particular, as to the importance of restorative justice, as we not only look to a future where Rikers Island is officially deemed a public place, but when it can provide direct benefits to those communities who are most impacted by its legacy of over-incarceration and trauma. In particular, we look forward to continuing to work with and uplifting the voices of those who have returned from Rikers, who are leading in the conversation about the need for a Renewable Rikers. A vision where the 413 acres are no longer used to detain, inflict pain, and imprison, but rather where this land represents a greener, cleaner, more sustainable future for our city, providing previously incarcerated individuals with the opportunity for good green jobs while being able to know that their communities are breathing cleaner air. We look forward to continuing our work with our partners in the Freedom Agenda, the Renewable Rikers Coalition, the City Council, and the administration to ensure that Rikers is closed as quickly and as soon as possible, that the detainee population continues to decrease, and that investments are made not only in communities, but in transforming the blight of Rikers Island for a source of renewable energy for our future, truly the only thing that toxic island should be used for at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ashan. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Only Love Alston.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. I, I'm not sure if you can see my camera, but I will just testify. Good afternoon, and thank you to the commission and the council for hearing us today. My name is Minister Only Love Chika Alston, Lead Organizer for Bronx Connect, which convenes New York faith leaders for criminal justice reform. I'm also a minister at Bethel, the House of Yahweh, a 67-year-old congregation in the South Bronx. Bronx Connect's mission is to keep youth out of jail for life. We also have offices in Upper Manhattan. We supported the campaign to close Rikers, and now we feel it's the responsibility of City Council to continue these efforts and begin to implement the plan on the fastest timeline possible. We urge you to review active solutions to improve and transform New York City while protecting the dignity, freedom, and future of all New Yorkers. Please ensure that the jail population reductions in response to COVID-19 are preserved and furthered. Please release an updated timeline on the continued public engagement around the design bill process for the borough-based plan. Please also urge the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to release updated projections on the average daily population in New York City jails post-December 2026. Please report on the progress your administration is meeting concerning these commitments detailed in the October 2019 ULR points of agreement document. Please present an active plan for reducing the Department of Corrections budget and workforce by the end of fall 2021. But we also, especially myself as a faith leader, who's the daughter of someone who was a corrections officer, with that plan, please release alternatives for correction officers and how we will help them transition to other careers. Commit to reducing the Department of Corrections budget by $150 million in addition to your executive budget proposal for a total of $315 million this year, and commit to hold the DLC officers accountable and stand up to the Correction Officers Benevolent Association and other officer unions so we can have true reform in human rights on Rikers Island. reform in human rights on Rikers Island. And as a minister, there are hundreds of ministers throughout the city that are concerned about this issue, that are still concerned about the timeline of the rebuild, and who want to help create solutions so that our people who did work for corrections are not out of jobs, but also so our people who are incarcerated have human rights as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Minister Alston. Questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Darren Mack.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for hearing the public today. My name is Darren Mack. I'm a native New Yorker who was incarcerated on Rikers Island as a teenager for nineteen months when the population was over twenty thousand people being detained there. And so in 2016, with no hesitation, I heeded the call of directly impacted people and communities, survivors of Rikers Island such as myself, advocating and organizing for its closure. I'm here today to respectfully encourage the city planning commission to also heed the call of the family of Khalid Browder, of the family of Lealeen Polanco, of all the victims, families, and survivors of the pain and trauma that Rikers inflicted on our lives. We want the CPC to vote yes to this application to finally close the book on this moral stain on our city. Vote yes to set a clear deadline for when the abou grave of New York City, also known as Rikers, must be closed. Directly impacted people and communities, New Yorkers will continue to organize, to push the city to shutter Rikers faster than the January twenty-seventh deadline. We will also continue to advocate for the city to pass the Renewable Rikers Act and the vision to remove all of the toxic peaker plants across our city and develop sustainable green energy to power New York City on the island. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Questions? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Eileen Mar.
Hello, my name's Eileen Mar. I am a community leader for Vocal New York as well as the Beyond Roses campaign. In addition to that, I, I'm a social worker and I'm a survivor of Rikers Island myself. I spent four hundred and twenty days there as a criminalized survivor of domestic violence. So I know firsthand that Rikers Island needs to be closed, not in 2026, but tonight. It is, it's a cancer of an island that is now nothing but landfill built on stolen land that ever since the United States stole it from the Native Americans has been used for nothing but evil. It was originally used as, as a holding jail, for lack of a better word, for slave, for quote-unquote slave hunters to steal free individuals and resell them back down south during the times of slavery. After that, it's been used as nothing but a quote-unquote traditional jail. Its isolation has done nothing but enhance and foster the corruption and torturous environment that has festered for all these years on not only the most, um, most, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost my space, on the city's most, excuse me again, on our, I'm sorry, on the city's most, oh, goodness, on the individuals of the city who are most in need of help rather than incarceration. In addition to that, it's, as has been previously noted, it has been, it has been a landfill for decades upon decades, causing not only health, health crises to the detainees, but also those that are employed on it, on the island. As long as the island is open and as long as that it is legal for anything but public space, the city and/or corrections will find a way to utilize it as a jail, and that must stop. Like I said, not in 2026, but tonight. Although I know that is not realistic, the organizations I'm with, including Vocal and Beyond Roses, are on board with the plans for closing the island and building facilities off of the island in more central locations so that visitation and community resources could be accessible.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. Questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Mar. Our next speaker will be Brandon Holmes.
Good afternoon. I wanted to uplift all the comments and support for the Renewable Rikers legislation at the beginning of my testimony, but also focus on the role that, in the future of this city planning commission. For the past five years, I've worked tirelessly to follow the leadership of formerly incarcerated New Yorkers who created the momentum and secured a commitment to permanently close Rikers Island. In March, many of us watched as our first world nation burned before our eyes in response to state violence, and our elected leadership failed to redirect even one billion dollars from the NYPD's six billion dollar operating budget. Mind you, this was several weeks after NYPD had been filmed driving two tax-funded SUVs through barricades lined with peaceful protesters. The story of New York in 2020 is the continued neglect for safety and dignity for all of its residents. Disgraceful police commissioners and district attorneys opposed bail and parole reform, sentencing thousands of New Yorkers to possibly death behind bars. Threats to end summer youth employment opportunities entirely, and then offering half of the funding required to sustain minuscule programs, is unacceptable. And the massive cuts that came to all social services, including housing and access to healthcare or mental health support, will be the legacy of New York City in 2020. When the city became the epicenter of COVID-19, Rikers reported an infection rate of more than eight times that of the rest of our communities. You've seen the headlines, and if you can remember the 2009 swine flu pandemic, you remember how Bloomberg failed to curb the spread in our city jails and how prisoners were forced to bury the bodies of their neighbors, as many of them continue to do on Harts Island. Any delays to any U-LARP or related demolition and construction timelines means thousands of New Yorkers will remain in toxic, deadly conditions that much longer. These delays may well be out of your control as COVID-19 has presented many unseen and seen challenges for leaders across the globe. But I have to remind you of your power and authority as the city planning commission to ask the difficult questions and demand transparency on these U-LARP projects. As citywide commissioners, please ask yourselves what you can do to prevent further delays to improving the living conditions and quality of life for countless New Yorkers and their loved ones who are targeted by state violence and have no escape. When the final vote passed in October with three thousand seven hundred and fifty beds, we did not see any reduction in the projected cost, and today we heard another reduction in the bed count. While this is positive, we want to know how having access to this pool of money can actually expedite this process and guarantee that we close Rikers on the designated timeline from that October vote. As the city moves forward with U-LARP, those of us who led the work to close Rikers will continue to show up for our neighbors. Do not go through the motions and approve whatever is dropped on your desk. Please continue to ask the hard questions, as many of you have. And if you don't know where to start, please call advocates. Justice delayed is justice denied, and you have a responsibility to direct your power and authority to quite literally build-
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you for the testimony, and I'll turn to the commission. Again, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Our next speaker is Anna Pastorella.
Yes, hi. My name is Anna Pastorella. I got involved in the campaign to close Rikers because my son spent six years awaiting trial on that infamous island called Rikers Island. How can the criminal justice system imprison a person on the presumption that he has done a crime and keep that person six years on Rikers Island waiting for trial? What is truly criminal is leaving a person to languish on Rikers Island, hoping to get a fair trial someday, years later, or never. This is not a medieval kingdom where we tolerate people being thrown in jail for undetermined long periods of time, living in deplorable conditions, tortured, or even murdered while incarcerated. This is the most progressive city in the world. This is the capital of the world, and we must eradicate the shameful, infamous jails that still operate like the dungeons used by the queens and kings of past centuries. The actual law states that a person is innocent until proven guilty, but my son was treated like a criminal and was mentally and physically abused on that infamous island by other prisoners. He was tortured by correction officer, officers, and treated like a guilty person while the torturers were actually behaving like criminals. For six years, I visited my son every weekend. I had to endure hours of travel, hours of waiting around, hours of witnessing or enduring abuse by corrections officers so that I could finally visit my son for one hour. I was treated like a criminal as well, as many other visitors. With our respect, it only disgrace. Rikers Island has been used to abuse innocent people while waiting for trial, their families and visitors, and it has been keeping people in prison for years without a reason why a speedy trial is not being implemented per our constitutional right. That is not what the justice system is supposed to do. Rikers Island is tucked away from everyone's eyes, and it is lawless and forgotten place. The law on that infamous island is made by correction officers depending on their daily moods. The only purpose that island serves is to continue mass incarceration. I know that this is the power of our organization that has gotten us here today. Since the mayor announced this proposal in response to our demands to shut Rikers Island down, we have been advocating to improve it to match our plan. I hereby ask all of the members of the city planning commission to both rikers island once and for all in due time by 2027, though through efforts, we believe it will be sooner. Let's take example of civilized societies where jails are designed for humans, not windowless, cement cages, or cramped cells, and no space for the type of programs that can meet basic human needs.
Thank you, Ms. Pastorella. Questions? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be-
I believe Commissioner Ortiz has her hands up.
Yes, Commissioner Ortiz and Ms. Pastorella, if you could, remain on the line.
I simply wanted to make a comment. It is heartbreaking to hear testimony like that, and I think we need to continue to remember that those are the stories that made, you know, this vote originally so important. I'm really, I'm very sorry for what has happened to your family and what you've had to endure.
Thank you for reminding us because this hearing brings back the memories of the equally powerful hearing that we held up at John Jay College on the initial application. Commissioner Burning.
Yes, I just want to second Commissioner Ortiz's comment. That was really, it was awful to hear that testimony, and it's so good that we are actually moving away from those days and hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Commissioner Fellows.
I was just going to thank the advocates for really their ongoing leadership and dedication on this issue. I think that, I think we all know that the plan needs, needs ongoing accountability and oversight and engagement by public and family members and individuals who've been directly impacted and have experience at Rikers, and it's critically important that those voices continually are lifted up and inform the plans as, as they evolve. So really, really appreciate everybody being here and sharing their stories and, and calling us to task.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ramona Ferreira.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Ramona Ferreira, and I am a social entrepreneur and community advocate from Mott Haven in the South Bronx. I'm also a member of the Closed Rikers Bronx Neighborhood Advisory Council. I encourage you to vote in favor of the establishment of public place on Rikers Island and prohibition of any future incarceration on Rikers Island after 2027. Recounts of Rikers history regularly begin with ownership of the Rikers family, which ended in 1884. This island, which was originally ninety acres, grew through, grew to four hundred acres through landfilling. Rikers became a human dump site as New York City banished to it those that didn't measure up to fluctuating and oftentimes classist and racist mental and moral rules. In the process, we desecrated this land and traumatized thousands. It is important that we understand this history. However, as a woman of indigenous descent, I feel a responsibility to the land. I am haunted by what this land has endured. I often find myself wondering what this land was before. These questions convince me that restorative justice, as it relates to Rikers Island, must aim to rehabilitate individuals held on it and the land itself. While we don't know what the Lenape people used this island for, we can be sure that it was used for the greater good of the people. We now have an opportunity to do the same, making Rikers a public space through this application, and then transferring it to the management of the Department of Environmental Protection through city council legislation will allow us to heal and honor this land and the human beings that have endured trauma on Rikers. New York City took an important step towards reimagining our justice system with the adoption of Closed Rikers legislation in 2019. This has created an opportunity for us to redefine what the island will become when all humans are taken off the island in 2027. This application reflects the city's continued commitment to create a smaller, safer, and more humane justice system while guaranteeing the closure of all jails on Rikers Island. Turning Rikers Island into a public space ensures that it will serve New Yorkers in a conscious and equitable way. Public spaces provide health benefits, both physical and mental. Through the Renewable Rikers Act, our next step, we will have an opportunity to remove environmental burdens from my community and establish green infrastructure on Rikers. Shifting waste management, water treatment, trash transfer points to Rikers will allow my community to lower pollution and toxins that we are exposed to daily. Shifting these facilities frees up land to create parks in a community where we don't have any. Our vision also aims to create green jobs within the public spaces on Rikers. Jobs-
I'm afraid that the time has expired. I will ask if any commissioners have questions? Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Fededa. I'll note now that we are getting close to the end of speakers who have signed up, and so I will note that if anyone is listening and would like to be heard, please register to testify either by phone or through the New York City Engage portal. And I will now call on our next speaker, Zachary Katz Nelson.
Good afternoon. My name is Zachary Katz Nelson. I am the Policy Director of the Independent Commission on New York City Criminal Justice and Incarceration Reform. We're commonly known as the Littman Commission after our chair, former chief judge in the state of New York, Jonathan Littman. Thank you for the chance to speak today. Appreciate it. Thank you for having us here. We are in favor of this, this change to designate Rikers as a public place and for it to no longer be used as a place of incarceration, as you've heard, as you know well. There is a fierce urgency to close Rikers as absolutely soon as possible. It is just as decrepit and isolated and decaying as it was when you took the bold step in last year of approving the borough-based jails, and it absolutely must be closed as soon as possible. I would just note one particular thing, which is that the city mentioned earlier that they may delay or seek a delay in the, you know, the December thirty-first, 2026 deadline that's built into this resolution, and we would urge you to be skeptical of any delay and to push back and to really try and see if there's any way that that cannot happen that we will keep to this date. And I say that because there was about a two, two and a half month delay in some of the design and advising process for the DDC when they're going through the AECOM, which was- was contracted to provide support for their borough-based jail process for the planning and the RFP process. Their contract was put on hold temporarily, but they are now back in business. They are now working full steam ahead. DDC's been working full steam ahead, and so it feels like there must be a way that we can make up that gap of two, two-and-a-half months through the design and construction and demolition processes that need to move forward. Let's see if there's a way that we can keep to this deadline, because as you've heard and as you know, every day that Rikers is open, every day that people are held there, particularly as people of color are suffering, it is people that are being harmed. And so, we need to try and advance this closure as much as possible and hold fast to the December 31st, 2026 date, if at all possible. And we're grateful, hopefully, you will vote yes, please, to close the circle for the bold action you took last year to advance the borough-based jails to now ensure that Rikers will no longer be used for incarceration moving forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Katz Nelson. Questions from the commission? Okay, then, thank you for your testimony. And Ryan, I will check in once again to determine whether we have additional people who have indicated an interest in speaking.
We have no other speakers on this signed up. Just wanted to check. No, no other speakers.
Okay, then, I will echo the comments of the other commissioners of the power of the advocacy community and on a project as complex and with so many different moving parts, and that will, which will be implemented not in a matter of months but of years, just the importance that we place on the advocacy community's continued involvement in this. So, thank you to all who testified on that. And with that, the public hearing is closed. And Madam Secretary, any other items on the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to read a statement. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and again, are there other members before the commission today?
No, Madam Chair.
Then the public meeting is closed. Thank you to all commissioners and to the team on the scenes who made this possible. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, take care.